I'll call the court to order at this time. I think it is 3:30, and I'll call the court to order for this special meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court dated June 25, 2020. I would like to ask Commissioner Brian Booth if he would say the invocation, please.
Dear Lord, as we come for you today, dear heavenly Father, watch over this meeting, dear heavenly Father, and watch over the people of this county, dear Lord, and this virus, dear heavenly Father, and keep us all safe, dear Lord, and help us to make all the right decisions in this court meeting we have today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Robertson.
Here.
Commissioner Tackett.
Here.
Commissioner Booth.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Ronnie Robertson if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And since we do have a few more people in the courtroom, even though we are socially distancing, if everyone would please make sure that they have a mask, and also make sure that your cell phones are turned off. First item on the agenda is acknowledgment of receipt of the Pikeville Pike County Airport Board Audit Financial Statements for years ended June 30, 2019, and June 30, 2018. All right. So there are no findings, and the auditors had sufficient information to formulate their opinions. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the Pikeville Pike County Airport Board's Audit Financial Statements for the years ended June 30, 2019, and June 30, 2018? We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Second item is approval of the application and guidelines for the Pike County Small Business Relief Fund Grant. And we have, this is the grant program that we talked about previously. We, today, I signed a form for the Department of Local Government that we have to send back in saying that we agree, and I'll just read this to the public and also to the court. It says, "Dear Judge Jones, on behalf of Governor Andy Beshear and the staff of the Department for Local Government, I am pleased to inform you of the preliminary approval of the coronavirus relief funds for the above referenced project. This approval is contingent upon the acceptance of the conditions outlined below. Applicant will enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Commonwealth. Applicant will submit an authorization resolution. Applicant will submit duplication of benefit certification, and applicant will ensure two CFR Part 200 audit requirements are met." It says, "Please indicate your acceptance of these conditions by signing the attached and returning the signed document to DLG as soon as possible. Following receipt of the attached memorandum of agreement will be prepared and sent to you for signature. Once the signed MOA is returned, DLG will begin the process of executing the MOA. Upon final approval by the Finance Cabinet, DLG will provide a copy with the required next steps. We look forward to working with you and assisting, et cetera." So I have signed that. We're going to send it back in. Hopefully, that'll go out tomorrow. Once we get the memorandum of agreement, then we'll bring it back before the court for approval. And, you know, there's a few more steps than we thought initially were required, but this letter was dated June 15, so we are getting this done as quickly as we can. The Small Business Relief Fund is the program that we talked about previously that would allow us to use a portion of the COVID money, which was allocated of about 1.9 million for Pike County. That money can only be used to reimburse for COVID-related expenses. There's some misconception out there among the general public that we're going, we can pave roads with it, or those kind of things. We can't. All that we can do with that money is to seek reimbursement for cleaning supplies, disinfecting supplies, overtime that's been incurred, temporary labor, those kind of things that were not budgeted expenses. If it's a budgeted expense, something that we budgeted for in the budget that was submitted to the Department of Local Government, it can't be recaptured. The jail will be submitting their information to us. Sheriff Scott can submit his information to us. The sheriff's office will probably be able to recover more than the fiscal court because they will be able to recover where their law enforcement agency salaries and some of those things. But we have, as part of this program, it's my position, I think it's a course position, that we do everything we can to keep all this money here and not send it back to Frankfurt, let Frankfurt keep it. We have prepared the Small Business Relief Fund. Now, this will be, if approved, a grant program and a copy of the applications in here. It basically says, "The applicant would complete all parts of the application with required documentation. It will be dropped off at the Pike County Courthouse or emailed to Pam Vanover@pam.vanover@ky.gov." So incomplete applications will not be accepted. Applications will be on a first-come, first-served basis, and the Pike County Small Business Relief Fund Committee will appropriate available funds among applicants based on percentage of business loss, number of employees, and other methods to be determined. Funds are limited, grants will be made only as funds are available. All applications will go before the Pike County Small Business Relief Fund Committee." We have not named that committee yet, but I thought we would go ahead and get this approved, or if there's any changes that need to be made. To be eligible, and again, this is subject to change or modification, we'd have to have a physical location within Pike County and within the city limits of Pikeville, Elkhorn City, Corone Village. That's probably not worded correctly. It should be within Pike County. I think we could probably leave it there, including, we will need to polish that language up some, Reggie, because I think it's, it's sort of, the way that's worded, it would be, it would mean it would have to be in one of those locations, and within. So it's just probably a physical location within Pike County. We could delete the rest of that language and just put a period. If there's no objection, we can just strike through that. Be open and in operation prior to March 1, 2020. Employ 50 or fewer, part-time or full-time employees. We'll need to write that word in there. Be a small-for-profit business or small nonprofit entity. The business must be active and operational. The business must provide documentation showing a cessation or reduction of income due to coronavirus. Grant applicants are required to provide an IRS W-9 form to the Small Business Relief Fund Committee. If grants are, if grant applicants are registered with the Secretary of State, they must be in good standing. Grants awards start from 2,000 and can go up to 7,500 to be determined by the committee based on economic needs. Grant applicants doing business in Pike County or city limits of Pikeville, Elkhorn City, and Corone Village must be current on their occupational net profit fees and any Pike County solid waste accounts, or other applicable city fees as of March 1, 2020. Are there any comments, or questions, or suggestions about the application? So it would be my motion that we modify the attached application on line item one to physical location within Pike County, period. And on line three, it would be employ 50 or fewer, part-time or full-time, and it should say employees, period, at the end. So with those two corrections, I would have a motion to adopt this application packet for that program.
Second.
It was second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. So at the next meeting, if the commissioners would submit some names, we don't really have, have a limit. I do think that it would be, that the people applying for the money should have to go before the committee, not just submit an application, I think, because if there's questions they need to be able to ask, and those questions need to be able to be addressed to the person that's asking for the money. It will be my suggestion to the court that we have an initial allocation of $500,000 for this program. We may not use that much money. On the other hand, we may have greater need out there. I think that that amount would be a safe amount that we could advance. We would be reimbursed for that, but it would also make sure that we have enough room to make sure that we can cover all of the expenses that we're going to be out of pocket for, you know, additional employees, overtime, cleaning supplies, the sheriff's recoverable expenses, any expenses that the county clerk may have. We need to reach out to Rhonda to make sure that we're getting anything that she's been out of pocket, and also the Pike County Detention Center. We've already had conversations with Mr. Morris about that. So I think we're moving forward. We really can't do a whole lot more or start issuing any kind of grant payments until the MOA is executed and it has been approved, and that, because I'm afraid if we started doing something before that's approved, we may not be able to recover those expenses. Do you agree with that, Frankie? I don't really want to start doing that until we're in a position where we could immediately ask for reimbursement. I don't want to, I don't want to lay out the money and then have to wait a month or two to get our money back. I want to be able, as soon as we have this program implemented, excuse me, that we should be able to turn around and get our money back. Would that be, would that be something that the court would be inclined to want to do, is to make sure we can get our money back quickly? So, all right. So at the next regular meeting, we'll address the, Jeanne, if you'll put this on the committee for me, or on the agenda, authorization of the Grant Committee, Grant Approval Committee. I know we want our Commonwealth attorney, Bill Sloan, on there so we can make sure there's no questions. We also want Mr. Jeff Vanderbeck that's in the newspaper, and we'll submit some additional names as well. And it will be required that they meet in person. All applicants will have to come before the committee to request the money, the funding. We think it's a good program. There's a lot of businesses out there, you know, everything from, you know, beauty shops to small grocery stores to auto repair store, I mean, there's a lot of businesses that have been impacted, and we want to make sure that every penny we can direct to them will be directed. So, that being said, we can, we'll deal with all those other issues, and hopefully we'll have the memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement back by then. Next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution, the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of a local government economic development fund, House Bill 352 proposal grant application for $145,409, and local government economic development single county funds to complete a sanitary sewer evaluation report and complete the jetting and identification of the remaining sewer collection system and approval to execute all related documents. And this is, of course, for the Elkhorn City. The project that they've had up there, they've had a lot of issues with their sewer system, and we, it's something that's very important to that community as we try to work to grow Elkhorn City. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Robertson. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution, the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of Kentucky Department of Local Government Economic Development Fund, LGEDF, House Bill 352, project proposal grant application for $12,500, and local government economic development single county funds for matching funds for the USDA grant to construct a truck bay extension for the Shelby Valley Fire Department, Number Three, and approval to execute all related documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. This $12,500 will match, I think, $45,000, is that correct? $37,500 in grant money, and it's something we're going to talk about here a little bit later. Instead of taking $50,000 out of our single county account to do this project, we were able to work with the USDA Rural Development Office and get $37,500 by simply matching it with $12,500. So it is, it's, this is what we need to do more of. I think the court's in agreement that we need to look for every penny of grant money that we can. And so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the adoption of a resolution, the Pike County Fiscal Court authorizing the filing of Kentucky Department of Local Government, LGEDF, House Bill 352, project proposal grant application for $12,500, and local government economic development single county funds for matching funds for the Center for Rural Development Technical Assistance Program Grant, for additional funding to complete a feasibility and strategic implementation plan for Pike County broadband, and approval to execute all related documents. Is there a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Booth. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the approval to file an AML pilot program application in the amount of up to $2,692,244 for funding of the Phase II infrastructure for the Wolf Pit Industrial and Technology Park. This is another grant that we're applying for that we believe we'll be able to obtain that will go a long way to getting the infrastructure into the Wolf Pit Industrial and Technology Park. Is there a motion to approve? We have a motion by Commissioner Robertson. Is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner Booth. Any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. The next item is the approval to advertise for requests for proposals for qualified engineering firms to complete an ATV trails master plan for Pike County, and to execute the plan, oversee property acquisition, lease executions, or easement executions, and to implement the trail design. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. And Sharon, this is going to be more than just for a trails master plan. This needs to encompass all the things I just said. It needs to, because there was a plan done once before, but we need, this proposal should include the execution of any leases or easements necessary to establish the trail, to design the trail, and to oversee getting the trail system up and running. We need people on the ground every day working on this. So we have a motion and a second.
Judge, we've got a, quite a few people that is volunteering along with whoever we do get on this.
The volunteers, we need to thank the volunteers on the trail committee. A lot of people put a lot of time in on this, but I think that in order to push this through, make sure we get it done as fast as possible, we need somebody working on this every single day.
Yes. But what I was saying is through the, whoever we hire to do the engineering department is, is they will, we do have locals that will go day, whatever day, with them, and that way we've got input.
It's going to take working with the trail committee, because there's people on that committee that help get the big sandy lease, and we're working with AEP, so it's going to take a team effort. This is not going to be an easy undertaking because, you know, West Virginia, the state funded their trail system.
Right.
And I want to clarify something. There was somebody posting on Facebook that said, you know, this money's going to be spent in other counties. There's not one penny that this court will appropriate that will be spent outside of Pike County. And in fact, we did not agree to put money up for the Kentucky Regional Mountain Trails Authority, and we voted not to do that. A lot of other counties put money into that. We're going to do our own trail system, and then we believe that that will allow other counties like Lecher County, or Knott County, or Floyd County, to tie, Martin County to tie into that, as well as the Haffield McCoy Trail System. So we have a motion by Commissioner Tackett, and a second by Commissioner Robertson, to approve advertising for requests for proposals, ATV trails master plan, and there's no other question or discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. I'd like to pass over number eight for now and take it up in a few minutes. I may want to interview these folks before we have an opportunity to make this appointment. The other question is, Mr. Hickman, were you able to reach or get a copy of the law or the new statute that talks about approval of the taxing districts' tax rates? Okay. We need to do that before the next meeting, because I'm sure that we're going to be having some of these groups come before us. And I don't know the exact terms of the statute, because it was passed last year, but now the court, I believe, either has a veto power or the power to set the rates for the taxing districts. And it's, you know, it would be my recommendation that before we approve any tax rates, that we need to know exactly what the financial condition in the plan moving forward for the Library Board, Health Department, all these organizations, and I'm not picking on anybody in particular, but if we're going to have the responsibility of overseeing their tax rates, we need to make sure that the rates are fair and not higher than they should be. It would be my position, if these entities are sitting on a lot of money, that if we've got the power to roll back some of these tax rates, we need to do that. There's no reason that, and I'll use the Library Board, there's no reason that their tax rate should be close to what the fiscal courts is. I know how much I pay on my own home, and our libraries are important, but, you know, these are really lean financial times, and we need to make sure that they're not over, or inflating those tax rates. So, all right, Mr. Fannin, do you have anything, sir? Mr. Little, you have anything? We don't have any road work to address today. Mr. Stacy, you have anything today? So we need to discuss some pending litigation that Mr. King and I are involved in on behalf of the county. We also need to discuss the, some specific personnel matters. Mr. King, would you please instruct the court and the public on the relevant provisions of the Kentucky Open Meetings Law set forth in Kentucky, KRS Chapter 61?
61, 810(c) and AF, to discuss the two matters you've noticed today, Judge.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Booth. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Is there any other question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. And we will be in recess until a call of the chair for purpose of executive session. At this time, we'll call the court back to order. Is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tackett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Robertson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. Next item is the authorization for personnel decisions. It will be my motion to approve hiring Trevor White temporarily as a loader on solid waste lot one at a 2H rate of pay effective 6/17/20. Approval to hire Clinton Morris temporarily as a loader on solid waste lot one at a 2H rate of pay. I'm not sure, Justin, what's the day of, effective day of that one?
Today.
Okay, effective today. Approval to hire Cody Young as a packer driver at solid waste area one at a 3H rate of pay. That will actually be a transfer. And approval to accept Dwayne Harmon's resignation effective June 3, 2020. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tackett. Any question or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. It would also be my motion that we authorize health insurance for the temporary employees hired as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We will be able to recoup those expenses. I certainly do not want to hire someone temporarily, particularly in solid waste or in a safety position, who might come in contact with this virus and not have health insurance. Would there be a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any question or discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson.
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett.
Yes.
Commissioner Booth.
Yes.
Judge Jones.
Yes. I would like to point out, if you're listening to this program, we are in need of some temporary loader positions to be filled. Those are jobs that were typically done by the jail work release program. That inmate labor program saved the county about $500,000 a year, and it has saved the taxpayers a lot of money over the years. It was $500,000, let me clarify that, just on the solid waste system, not counting for public works, you know, parks, playgrounds, community centers, and other maintenance projects that the inmates did. Department of Corrections has prohibited inmates from leaving the jail due to the pandemic. We have no idea when that labor source will be available. We will temporarily at least be able to recover the overtime costs and the temporary loader positions that have been hired. We did bring five or six of the laid-off road department workers back, temporary positions. Hopefully, if our finances stabilize, that we'll be able to move those employees back to the road lots. So with that being said, if you know someone that's in need of a job, that will be willing to work on the solid waste department, please contact the judge's office at 432-6247 to put your application in. These are temporary positions that will be funded through December. Hopefully, that if the pandemic continues, Congress will authorize an extension of that period of time. So again, 432-6247. I will warn you, it is a very difficult job, and that you need to be in pretty good physical condition if you take the job. The hours aren't... pretty good physical condition if you take the job. Hours aren't short, it's all-weather, and it is a demanding job physically. So again, 432-6247, you can ask for Mr. Justin Mayne or the Personnel Director, and he will direct you to the proper way to get an application filed for that position, and we can get you in pretty quick for an interview. At this time, we'll turn to the Pike County Department Supervisor's comments, and we'll start at the back. Mr. Fannin, do you have anything? Mr. Spears, our Safety Director, anything, sir? Doug Tackett in Emergency Management? Diana Thacker in Community Services? Mr. Williamson, anything in Public Works? Ms. Goff, anything from the animal shelter? All right. Also, Ms. Hall, anything on the grant application process? We need to know. Anything we need to know? Well, maybe at the next court meeting, you can have an update on everything you're working on for us. Why don't we just have an update at the next meeting, okay? Ms. Vanover, Finance? Ms. Thacker, anything? Mr. Little, Road Department? Mr. Mayne, anything? One thing, and I sort of overlooked this, we do have two appointments to do to the Library Board, or one appointment, we're going to look at those. I'm not ready to act on that until the next court meeting. So next week, we'll be able to take, actually the next court meeting is the 9th, I believe, the 7th. So we'll take care of that on the 7th. The other issue, are we, Reggie, are we ready to discuss the, it was, we should have done it during Personnel, are we ready to talk about the Ratliff, the interview with Mr. Ratliff? Okay. We'll discuss that at the next meeting. All right. Mr. Keen, anything, County Attorney's Office? Judge Hickman, anything? Commissioner Robertson?
I just want to thank all the staff here at the courthouse. I want to thank all of our solid waste people that's putting in a lot of hours to get this garbage picked up. I think help's on the way. Shortly, I hope you'll be able to get home with a decent air and spend time with your family. I just want to thank them for all they do. And I thank the Road Department, too. I mean, baby's shorthanded, too, and it's, it's hard to keep all these county roads up, let alone cutting the weeds and repairing potholes. We just, we've got some good people in this county. I want to thank them.
Commissioner Booth?
Judge, I'd just like to remind everybody to come out on, for the fireworks, on the 3rd, 10:05. Looking forward, everybody can come out and have a good time with that. Make sure they're social distancing and that. I want to thank all of our employees for what they've been doing. Paul Screw, I saw Stavas, been doing a lot of weed eating, getting a lot of weeds cut. And also, I'd like for everyone to remember the Dotson family. His magistrate, Dotson, the former magistrate, Dotson's lost his wife. I'd like for them to remember the Dotson family over in that area.
Thank you. And that is the Belfry Fire Department-sponsored fireworks. It will be 10:05 on July 3. Actually, it's, it's probably one of the best fireworks displays you'll see anywhere in this region. So I want to thank the Belfry Fire Department for the many years that they've done that for, for the community.
Yeah, they'll be having a roadblock all day, that day, to take up money for next year's fireworks. We always take up a donation during that day. We'll have roadblocks to take up money, and we use that money to buy fireworks for the next year. So everyone that can give a donation, you know, as they drive by, going to the mall, they'll have different activities going on at the mall, and be sure to make a donation, if they don't mind, to the Fire Department for the fireworks.
And since you're on the Fire Department Board, if you'll get with me, I always try to give a check to the Fire Department to help them out from the law office. And if you just get with me next week, I'll take care of that for you.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Tackett, last but certainly not least?
I just, I just like the, like the other two commissioners, you know, we just got a, we've got a good team of employees here at this courthouse and out in the county. And I just want to thank them for what they do. I mean, you know, I know probably people get tired of hearing them say that, but you know, they don't realize what all, everybody does day in and day out. And, and the people in this county needs to know that. Like Commissioner Booth said, just keep the Dotson family in your prayers. You know, they, someone's going to, his family's going to have rough times down the road on this. But you know, other than that, that's, that's about it today.
Thank you, sir. Just two or three things to follow up. We've had a lot of calls to the judge's office about calls not being returned by the clerk's office, about the fact that they've not been able to get in to get work done in the Pike County Clerk's office. We have no control over anything that takes place in the clerk's office. I'm sure that they have ample reasons of what's taking place down there. We still are in the middle of the pandemic. I believe that number down there is 432-6211. If you have an issue, you can keep trying that number. But again, the courthouse is open. We are taking some precautions to make sure that people who come in aren't running a fever. We're trying to limit the wait time in the lobby. We're allowing people to wait in their vehicles. We're calling them, we're texting them to let them know that their spot in line is available. So we don't have people either standing outside in, in the hot weather, or we're not violating the social distancing guidelines. There's only so many people that we can have in the hallways until they're allowed in the clerk's office or the other offices. We are open for business. Again, we're, we're following the CDC guidelines in terms of six-foot social distancing. We encourage everyone to wear masks. If you saw what's happening in Texas, now, you know, the Health Department here says that we're starting to see more cases. In Texas, Governor Abbott has stopped the reopening process, conservative Republican governor. They have stopped elective surgeries because, just, just this week, because they're trying to make sure they've got adequate beds for COVID patients. I believe Mr. Keen told me that yesterday, Florida had 7,000 new cases yesterday. California had 7,000 new cases. California, Florida, and Texas, South Carolina, and North Carolina, a lot of states are seeing significant increases in COVID cases. So please, take this serious, try to wear a mask if you're going to be around a crowd. I understand if you're outside or exercising, it's perfectly fine not to. But if you're going to be around others, it's important that you continue to adhere to the guidelines. We are still in, in the process of complying with the 2020 census. That information is vital to the future of this county. In the 2020, I'm sorry, the 2010 census, only 75% of the people in this county responded. So far, Pike County's response rate is at 56.9%. Unless we have a complete count, it will jeopardize funding for projects like roads, healthcare, schools. It will have an adverse impact on the reapportionment of the state senate, state legislative, and congressional boundaries. When Lexington, Louisville, northern Kentucky continues to grow, we continue to lose population. It will impact our voting power in Frankfort. And I use this as an example, when I was first elected to the State Senate in 2000, I represented two counties. When I left, I represented five counties. That loss of influence because of the loss of the number of senators and representatives from eastern Kentucky will impact eastern Kentucky adversely for many years to come. So whether you're in Martin County or any other county that may be watching this, please answer the census. You can also do it online at 2020census.gov if you've not received the forms. You can do it by phone by calling 844-330-2020, and you can return the questionnaire by mail. In early August, census workers will be out in the county. Again, with the pandemic, for their safety and the safety of the residents of the county, the more people that we can have completed online, by phone, or by mail, the less the risk to the census workers in the public will be. I want to talk briefly about the county roads. I want to thank Mr. Little and the Road Department. A couple months ago, we were forced to lay off about a third of the county road department. And that's not his fault. That's simply because we found out that because of the pandemic, the state gas tax receipts were bottoming out. Pike County will lose about $600,000 in state aid in the upcoming fiscal year that starts July 1. That's a lot of money. That's money that went to pay salaries, benefits for road workers, and to, to do the road work itself. If our occupational net profit tax doesn't decrease to the amount that we have budgeted, we budgeted a $600,000 decrease. We hope to be able to bring some of those employees back, because we are getting behind on the road work. But let me be very clear about this. Our roads were not in good shape when we came in. When you can pave 15 or 16 miles a year, and you've got 1,100 miles of roads, these roads didn't get in these conditions overnight, and by no means are we going to be able to fix them overnight. Our ability to pave large areas, large numbers of road miles, it's, they're nonexistent. We can't do that, because we don't have the money. And a lot of these roads have not had attention in many years. We had one magisterial district in the old system that basically had no pothole patching or no significant road work for a year or two, because they were working on ramps into the river, over on the Tug, Tug River, Tug Fork of the Big Sandy. I mean, it's, those are the kind of decisions that were made that we're trying to fix. We can't put, you know, we can't put spilled milk back in the jug. But going forward, our road department's doing the best they can. We've had a lot of complaints about weeds. Well, let me say this, my weeds on my hauler haven't been cut either. And I understand every day how that presents a safety issue. It causes, you know, damage to vehicles. But the fact of the matter is, we only have a limited number of employees and a limited number of mowers. And I said it in the last court meeting, when you cut the county roads in Pike County, it would be like cutting, you know, a one-lane road to Arizona, because when you've got 1,100 miles of roads and you got to cut both sides, that's about, that's 2,200 miles roughly of mowing that we have to do. And that's hard to imagine that there's that much mowing to be done, but it's factual. So please be patient. The road department's doing the best they can. They are out patching potholes and addressing the weed problem to the extent that we can. We also are continuing to operate our solid waste system. There have been some, some, some issues, there's no question. With the hiring of some of the loaders, we're going to hopefully shorten the workdays for our employees. At the same time, we hope to be able to improve efficiency. I'm proud of the fact that the Pike County solid waste system continued to operate during the pandemic, when larger, more affluent areas like Lexington, Fayette County stopped curbside pickup. We continue curbside pickup. We, at this point, have not had any Pike County employees contract the COVID-19 virus. And we're really lucky, because I did have one lady that was kind enough and considerate enough to advise us that her husband had, and herself had tested positive, and wanted our employees to take extra precautions when their trash was picked up. That's greatly appreciated. We did have, as this, just now, I just received an email, we have two new cases of COVID-19. There are active total cases of 18 total cases. No hospitalizations. Last week, we had three in the hospital. Right now, we don't have any. But we are seeing cases coming in almost every day. We had nine over the last weekend. We went a couple days without having any. We have two today. Again, fortunately, at least at this point, we've had no cases in our jail, and we want to thank the jail staff for their hard work there. If you do have a problem with the solid waste system, the phone number's 432-6245. Rather than going on Facebook and criticizing and condemning and complaining, give them a call, and they'll try to make it right. If not, you can call me at the judge's office. If I'm not there, I'll call you back as soon as I get an opportunity. If I'm in a meeting, if I'm out, as soon as I get an opportunity, I'll call you back. But please, call the solid waste office before you do anything else, because if Chuck Morley finds out there's a problem, I can assure you, he will do everything he can to address the problem. We will have another meeting on the 7th. We have probably quite a few important things. We hope to have something back either at that meeting or the second meeting in July on the request for proposals from the engineering firm on the trail system.
Hey, Judge?
Yes?
On the 7th, that court meeting, we've got a meeting in Frankfort on the 7th.
Which meeting, what's?
It's with the legislators on this trail.
Then, what time is that meeting?
Uh, it's, it's early.
Court meeting will be a 5:30 meeting?
We should be able to get back.
If we need to move it, we can.
Okay.
But... Okay. I mean, if, if not, we can always move it. It sort of surprises me the legislators are going to be down there, though.
We've had it, actually, they want us to come meet with them on some issues with the...
If, if we need to move it, we can.
Okay.
It's not a problem. So I believe that's all the business we have to bring before the court. And with that, I would request that Commissioner Booth say the benediction, please.
Good Lord, as we come before you once again, dear heavenly Father, Lord, go with us as we travel to our homes this evening, dear heavenly Father, and watch over this county and our country, Lord, with the virus, dear heavenly Father. And, Lord, remember the Dotson family once again, dear heavenly Father, leading, guiding, watch over us, dear Lord. I'm afraid, amen.
Is there a motion for adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Robertson is her second. With a second by Commissioner Booth. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Robertson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tackett?
Yes.
Commissioner Booth?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.